You ready? I call this meeting to order at October the 16th at 6:30. We have a quorum. We have two commissioners not present, Commissioner, Commissioner McCathery and Commissioner Boswell. I'm gonna turn it over to staff.
Thank you Chair. So for each item tonight, we'll have a call to order followed by staff report, following with applicant's presentation. At that time, all that can come forward, make comments in support or opposition to. At that time, please state your name and address for the record. Be brief and to the point within a three minute timeframe. Afterwards, commission and staff will have their discussion. The commission will vote to recommend approval as presented, approval with conditions, denial of the request, or to table the item. And then council will consider these items that are going up for tonight on Monday, November 13th. So talking about the agenda, we have no items removed from the agenda, and then we'll have a consent agenda with excusal of absence for Commissioner Boswell. And then we'll have new business with a replat on 2802 Broadway Street. And then we have three conditional use permits for you tonight, first of which is a restaurant at 1818 Main Street. And we'll have a barber shop, or a barber school, I should say, within the general business district at 1801 Country Place Parkway, Suite 115. And then we'll have a unique conditional use permit. This is for deviation on transparency requirements within the Old Town General Business District for property at 2319 North Grand Boulevard. With that, I'll pass back to you to go over the consent agenda.
Can have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved. Danzby, Commissioner Danzby.
Commissioner Fuentes, a second.
No discussion required, so all those in favor, validate it by raising your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Being that we don't have any, anything moved from the consent agenda, if we go into new business, consider it, consideration possible action on plat 23-100 replat of rehumboth acres. Legal description, I mean, I'm sorry, public hearing, a request by Brianna Hamilton, South Texas Survey. The applicant on behalf of Southwest Broadway LLC owner for approval of partial replat of rehumboth acres, combining three lots into one lot on 8.8523 acres of land located at 2802 Broadway. This is general location. Can I get a motion for approval?
Commissioner Fuentes is so moved.
Commissioner Coon, second.
Staff report.
Thank you Chair. Let me introduce Florence Buaku. Florence, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. Good evening Chair and members of the commission. This is a partial replats for rehumboth acres. And the goal is to combine three lots, three existing lots into one larger lot. So the original plot is from 2001 and was composed of a commercial center, a church, and a bank. And so the portion going to be replatted would be the commercial center, the lots within the commercial center of the original plot. The property is on general business. As you can see on your screen, it's, it's composed of three separate lots and it's surrounded by similar zoning with a single family residential to district to the south-east corner. And it's being proposed for an addition, so the intent is to add another building to the existing commercial retail center. The future land use is retail offices and services which supports the proposed retail building. This is a view of the original plot showing the three separate lots which are going to be combined into one lot. The main reason for this is to reduce existing non-conformities and allow a more integrated development with the addition of the new building. And this is the proposed plot showing the one lot going to be created as a result of this partial replat. Staff has reviewed this plat, or partial replat based on the criteria outlined in the UDC, and has determined that it meets all the necessary criteria for approval. And based on that, staff is recommending approval of the partial replat. Thank you. That concludes staff report.
Do we have the applicant present? Okay. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak for or against this project? Asking a second time, anyone to speaking for or against this item? Third and final time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, that moves us on to commission discussion? Seeing none, can I call for a vote? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, five to nothing carries. Commissioner Danzby has to recuse himself from this one. Alrighty, that considering, consideration possible action, conditional use permit, CUP 23-6, public hearing, a request by, I'm sorry, 16. A request by Caesar Dominguez, applicant on behalf of Bobby Orr representing Presidente Presidio Equities LLC, owner for approval of condition, of a conditional use permit for a restaurant with drive-in and/or drive-through service within the light industrial M1 district on approximately 0.8278 acres of land. General location is 1818 Main Street, Pearland, Texas. That brings us to, can I have a motion, well, can I have a motion as a second for approval?
Commissioner Hendrix, a motion to move forward.
Commissioner Coon, a second.
That brings us to staff report.
Thank you Chair. Patrick Bauer, let me introduce you to provide the staff report. Take it away.
Thank you, Martin. Good evening Chair and members of the commission. The request before you tonight is specifically for a 2,052 square foot drive-through restaurant within the light industrial M1 district. Excuse me. Specifically, 1818 Main Street is on the southwest corner of the intersection of Rice Dryer Road and Main Street. And the future land use for the property is the public slash semi-public future land designation. And to date, staff has not received any comments in favor or against the request. And so in terms of the surrounding zoning of the property, as mentioned, the zoning of the property is light industrial M1 and predominantly to the north, south, and west is also that light industrial M1. And then across Main Street to the east is the general commercial zoning district. And looking at the future land use of the property as well as to the south and west is that public slash semi-public. And if you remember in the last meeting, kind of had a discussion about this designation and it was likely that the Pearland ISD main offices are to the south of this, and that's where the public slash semi-public designation should have come in. And this is something that staff is going through the process of updating during the comprehensive plan update and the future land use plan updating. It'll likely be a commercial place type. Additionally, the properties to the north are the industrial future land use designation. And the properties to the east are the business commercial designation. And so looking at an aerial view of the property, we see to the north is currently a fast food restaurant as well as a brewery. To the east across Main Street is a multi-tenant retail building as well as a restaurant. And then to the south and the west where that manufacturing building used to be, it's now demolished. There's undeveloped land that is set for development. And so looking at a little history on the site, the subject property was annexed into the city in 1959. And this lot from aerial view, we can kind of assume that it was used as a parking area for the manufacturing slash office buildings to the west whenever they were there. Now they've been demolished and this area is ready for development. And more recently, the property was platted in June 2023. So here's a view of that property from Rice Dryer Road. You'll see those buildings are gone now. They've been demolished. And here's a proposed site plan for the drive-through restaurant. It's a 2,052 square foot building with the drive-through coming towards the rear of the property through the south portion of the property. And it also is providing parking for a lot as well. Here's a landscape plan, a preliminary one for the site. We see the required landscaping along State Highway 35, which is a corridor overlay district, as well as Rice Dryer Road to the north. And here are some proposed elevations. This is the front elevation, so it'd be the east side looking out towards Highway 35. And here we get a proposed side elevation. This would be that north side that would be facing the existing Wendy's, I believe, and the Valen's Brewery. And then here's another proposed side elevation to the south, which will be facing that undeveloped lot. And then finally, here's the proposed rear elevation on the west side. And so looking at some of the review criteria, as mentioned, the proposed CUP is consistent with the policies in the comprehensive plan and is to be consistent with the designation, which is to be fixed in the future land use plan update. Currently, Main Street and Rice Dryer Road are of sufficient width according to the thoroughfare plan. And the property is currently undeveloped and any future development required to comply with the UDC. And lastly, the subject property does have access to city utilities. And so looking at the approval criteria for a conditional use permit, staff found that the request met all seven of the criteria. As mentioned previously, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Additionally, staff did have one additional condition to add regarding the exterior facades regard to them being in substantial conformance to what has been shown to the commission. And so therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested CUP with the following condition, that the exterior building facade shall be developed in substantial conformance with the materials as depicted in the facade renderings. And that concludes staff's report.
Is the applicant present? Go to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Bobby Orr, 4601 Washington Avenue, Houston, 77007.
Are you just here to answer questions? Do we have them or do you have a presentation?
No, I think the staff has presented aptly what we have proposed. This is the balance of a four acre tract that we bought some time ago. It adjoins a 17 acre and a six acre tract where the rice dryers used to be. We've worked with the city on all three of these properties. The city has been extremely helpful in, with the, doing regional detention that was sized for this four acre tract. The back of the property, we recently sold to CAT ERS, who was on a portion of the 17 acres we originally bought. Mr. Carwash has proposed for the south side of this property, it would have joined the north side of Tractor Supply. We've worked out a access agreement that would extend all the way through the Pearland ISD property, which allowed us to not have to head any more curb cuts along 35. We're going to share the existing curb cut that's in front of this property with Mr. Carwash. We're reconstructing it to Tech Dot's specifications. And I think we have honored all of the criteria of the building ordinances. And I will say, we, as a company, develop commercial property all over Houston area. And we have a longstanding relationship with the city of Pearland. And I, in the past, have not hesitated to say what a pleasure it has been to work with the city and Pearland Economic Development. They're professional and responsive. And I think it's kind of the way the public-private relationship ought to work. So I just ask you for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Go to the podium and, and speak your address and your name, please.
Yes, I'm here for the replat of 23100, that'd be 2802 East Broadway, where we have our Con G T M B Center. Sorry, I'm running late.
Sir, that was previously voted on and approved. So that is not the correct item to speak of. That item has already been approved?
Oh, okay.
And we're on a different agenda item right now.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to, to speak for or against this item? Third and final time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, that moves it to commission?
I don't have anything for it.
Could, could you pull up that map? The, the overhead with the labels. I, I look at this and I really appreciate staff's time and their efforts here. One, the parcel itself, the master parcel, I call it, is undeveloped. You have a brewery, a fast food to the north, a multi-tenant retail across the street and a restaurant. There's absolutely no reason not to be for this property. So I appreciate, this tells me everything. Thank you.
Okay, I would be in favor of this with the conditions that the staff listed with it on the facade.
Ms. Hendrix, since you made, excuse me, Commissioner, nope, Vice Chair Hendrix, I'll get it sooner or later. Since you made the original emotion, I'm assuming that you're making a motion to amend to include the staff condition?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. And Commissioner Fuentes, I believe you made, nope. Commissioner Coon, you made the second on this. Are you in agreement with the amendment to that original motion?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's what we needed to hear for the purposes of the record. And now if y'all are inclined to vote, Chair Eisenberg, you're welcome to call for the vote.
Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor, show by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, four to zero. Thank you for coming out. That brings us to item three on the agendas. Consideration possible, possible action for conditional use permit, application CUP 23-17. Public hearing, a request by Rajay, Raj, Raj Samuel? I'm, I'm sorry, I know I'm probably butchering that name. Applicant on behalf of ROL-EMI Ventures LLC, owner for approval of conditional use permit for a barber school within the general business district on approximately 1.8969 acres of land. General location, 1801 Country Place Parkway, Suite 115, Pearland, Texas. Can I have a motion for approval?
Commissioner Fuentes, motion for approval.
Commissioner Danzby, second.
Staff report.
Thank you Chair. Once again, Patrick, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. So specifically, this conditional use permit is to allow a barber school and an 1,800 square foot lease space at 1801 Country Place Parkway, Suite 115. And the future land use of the property is the business commercial designation. To date, staff has received one phone call asking for more information about the requested CUP. And so the zoning, as mentioned, is general business. And it's all, there's also general business across Country Place Parkway to the west. But predominantly, it is surrounded by a planned unit development, which is the Country Place, planned unit development to the north, south, and east. In terms of the future land use designation, we kind of see mostly residential with some low-density residential to north and east, as well as medium-density residential to the south. And then we see the 288 gateway designation to the west. And so looking at the surrounding uses, we see mostly single-family residences to the east and the south with a golf course to the north. And then to the west and the other commercial development is a gas station and a bank. So a little history on the property, the subject property was platted and developed originally in 2004 with a 20,513 square foot multi-tenant retail building. And then it was, more recently, annexed into the city in 2012. So here we get a view of the subject property from McCard Road. And also from Country Place Parkway in that area, that's the portion of the multi-tenant that's closest to Country Place Parkway is where the lease space is. And here we get a view, the area that says pharmacy on the right-hand side, that's where the proposed barber school is to be. So here we get a look at where that would actually be located within that multi-tenant building. Country Place Parkway is on your left-hand side with McCard Road at the top. And here we get a look of the actual proposed lease space. And so in the main area, we see there's a practical area where they would actually be doing, learning about, like actually, it's the practicing area where they'd be practicing on people and giving haircuts. And we also have a waiting area with an office, a classroom, a break room as well, and then a restroom. It's looking at the review criteria, staff found that the business commercial is compatible or the requested use is compatible with the business commercial designation. Additionally, McCard Road and Country Place Parkway are both of sufficient width currently. And in terms of the UDC, this is interior alterations of a tenant space, which does not require UDC improvement triggers. But it may also, it may require though, compliance with certain other departments such as building or fire. And additionally, the subject property has access to city utilities. And so looking at the approval criteria for a conditional use permit, staff found that the requested use met all seven of the criteria. Additionally, the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan and the thoroughfare plan. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested conditional use permit. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Is applicant present? Go to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Edward Carter. Address 1801 Country Place Parkway, Suite 115, Pearland, Texas, 77584. I'm just here to answer any questions about the potential barber college, if I have any question.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. You can sit down, but you can stay close in case, in case we have some questions for you when we get to our part.
Mr. Carter? Immediately behind you in that other room outside the double doors are some green sheets of paper. Because you are not the person who was named as the applicant. If you'd be so kind to make sure you fill one of those out before you leave tonight and leave it with us?
I have one, yes.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Asking a second time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Third and final time, anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, that means it leaves, moves it to staff, to commission discussion?
I've frequented this shopping center over the years. There used to be a doctor's office there, the pharmacy I've utilized. I don't believe any of the other sites, but this, this seems to fit in with the character of the, of the shopping center. So in celebration of you bringing your first employee, I'll be, I'll be for this item. And thank you again, staff, for the, for the overhead. Very helpful.
I'm for this item. I see it really no different than a typical barber shop that's already serving the community and wish you the best of luck.
I have no issues with this item either, looking forward to having y'all part of the community. Same here, take no issue with it and wish you best of luck. Thanks for coming out.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. All those in favors, show by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, five to zero, it carries. And congratulations, we look forward to seeing you in the neighborhood. That brings us to item four, consideration possible action, conditional use permit, application CUP 23-18. A request by Yazin Ansari, applicant on behalf of South Texas Educational Technologies, owner for approval for a conditional use permit to deviate from the transparency requirements within the old- to deviate from the transparency requirements within the Old Town General Business District. Own approximately 3.84 acres of land. General location 2319 North Grand Boulevard, Pearland, Texas. Staff report.
Thank you, Chair. So for this one, this-
Hang on a minute. I'm gonna have a motion for approval in a second.
Commissioner Hendrix, can I make a motion to approve?
Commissioner Dansby, a second.
Sorry, staff report.
See, I just got so excited to talk about these cool projects, and then I just jump ahead. So as discussed, this is a requested have deviations from the transparency requirements within the Old Town General Business District. This property is located at 2319 North Grand Boulevard. And is within the Village District of the future land use. We had one call asking for more information about the project. So let's talk about the reason why y'all are seeing this. Old Town District has some specific rules and regulations, and it also allows for variances whenever projects don't necessarily meet, you know, the desired or the, the future that is developed through the mild form-based code that's in Old Town. So specifically, the section that's up on the screen discusses having a minimum 15% overall transparency when a project faces onto a public street, park, plaza, or public space. And then 25% within a storefront window on the ground floor. And it's this storefront window on the ground floor that the gymnasium just isn't designed to be able to, to meet that criteria. So as said, the UDC grants council the authority to approve a lesser percentage for the overall facade and for the storefront windows, which is what leads us to the applicant making this, this request. So you can see from the aerial and zoning map that the overall school site is split in zoning with the majority of it within the Old Town mixed-use. But the specific area that this gymnasium is going to go into is that bottom right corner at Park Avenue and Broadway Street, which is in the Old Town General Business District. And as mentioned, this is all within the Village District. So again, looking more specifically at the site and the surrounding uses to it, backs up to Zelinski Park, there's a residence on North Park. There's some undeveloped land, there's an office and a restaurant also on the right-hand east side. And you've got a multi-tenant building to the south and then a church and a residence and some undeveloped property that are facing out on the Broadway on the west side. So this property was annexed into the city in 1959. Pearland High School was built on the site in 1937. And then more recently, it was used by Allen Community College up until 2015, at which point it kind of changed hands and still remained a school. The property was platted in 2016 and Horizon Montessori moved in in 2018 after making some improvements to the building and the property. So this is showing where the gymnasium is specifically going to look at or be developed on. So that building that you see outside of where the tree is shading is where the building is going to be developed. And you can see it a little more clearly on the site plan here with the basketball gymnasium and the associated locker rooms and other portions to the building, kind of wrapping around the existing building. So this is the proposed elevation. So you can see that they're meeting the minimum percentage. It's just that they are providing that minimum percentage above where people would normally stand. So this, just to give you a little bit of size and scale, this doorway is right here at eight foot tall. So the windows are at a 12-foot height, are starting at 12-foot. So in staff's review of the criteria and for the future land use plan in the UDC, this meets the requirements across the board. And then with the conditions for the conditional use permit criteria, some of these don't necessarily apply because we're talking about transparency and the makeup of the facade. But other than that, across the board, we found that they met the criterias. So with all of that, we find that it meets and that the applicant has requested the deviation for the windows to be compatible with the purpose and design of the use, which is for the gymnasium. And staff is recommending approval of the requested CUP.
Is the applicant present? Do you wish to give a presentation? If you do, go to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Azim Ansari, and my address is 2401 M. R. Drive, Pearland, Texas.
Are you here just to answer questions if we have them?
Yes.
Okay, you can stay kind of close, but we've got a couple other things to do before we can dialogue with you, so.
Okay.
Persons wishing to speak for or against this item? Sorry, go to the podium, state your name and your address. We can't dialogue right now, but if you ask, if you state what your concerns are, I'm sure that they'll be addressed when the commission has time to, to speak.
Wayne Jones, 2237 North Park. I'd like to put that red screen back up there for a minute if you could. Okay, I think I'm the upper right-hand corner there. I'm the one that says residence. I don't think there's any other residence other than rental property maybe, or the undeveloped area. The question I have is the, are they going to tear down the little red building on the corner? I asked the mayor that question. He said there will be nothing torn down. But your picture here shows clearly that it's going to be right where that building is sitting. And which side are these, the windows that you're talking about, which is that going to be facing on Park Street? Really not real clear to me on, on your things here. That's my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? Asking for the third and final time, anyone else needing to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, that goes to commission?
Okay, this, Commissioner Hendrix. Martin, which side are the windows going to be facing?
So this is the south elevation. So this elevation is the view that you would, if you were standing here in the middle of Broadway and looking towards the building. This is the elevation of the project that you would see. So this is the view that you would see. And what the general business district calls for is that these windows would be at a storefront level. So that's what, when we, when the code references a storefront look, that's what it is essentially asking the development to do.
Okay, and then the existing building, it does appear that there's an existing building that's going to be demolished.
That is, my understanding is that they're wanting to remove that existing building. And it looks like the, it would be in about this spot, so half court on a, I don't know if that's the home or the opposing side, but.
And are there any windows high up on the building on the park, South Park Street?
For that, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick.
So they're still working on elevations, but the Park Avenue would be, it's a public street, so they would require to have the storefront windows. So the deviation, without the elevation, I can't totally confirm that, but from my understanding, that's where the stands would be, so you wouldn't have windows right behind your stands. So they would be also going for the deviation on Park Avenue as well, from my understanding.
Okay. That was it, all my questions.
The building that's being torn down, is that a historical building or anything of any kind that anyone is aware of? Long, I mean, this whole building is, I would imagine, but.
I was going to say, I know that the whole, that the whole building has a historical, I believe it has a historic marker, but I think it has a local historic preservation marker.
Mr. Ansari is here on behalf of the applicant. He may be able to answer that question for you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Ansari, would you happen to know if that building, what its previous use was? Obviously, other than a school, but specifically, and if it, if it was to retain any historical value?
We are not going to demolish a historical building. Only the smart fortune, which is to do the storage.
So it's not being demolished?
No. As with citizens and the remaining existing situation. We have 450 students, and our students don't have any place where they can play. And to compete for UIL, we have to create some playground or basketball courts for them. And that is the only situation we are looking for to establish the gymnasium.
I'm, still can't determine how the, the building looks like on the, can you go to the other elevation showing the, just that structure there to the right behind the banner? Yes, sir. Is it going to be in the space between that building and the street there? Is that, is that where the construction is going to happen? Is in that empty space there? Or is this building here the one that's going to, is it going to be removed?
Yeah, that's beginning with the move. And that is not a historical building.
Yeah, I, I might argue that, just because the history of that whole project is historical, being as that was Pearland High School, but that's my opinion only.
Commissioner Dansby, if I can suggest, it is possible to approve a CUP as long as it's not a historical building. Make it a condition that as long as it's not a historical building, you approve it. And if it is, turns out to be a historical building, that you would recommend denial. If that's how you are inclined to vote, or you and the rest of the commission, you could do that tonight instead of postponing this until we get certainty on that item.
And I certainly would want to define a historical building. When I say that, you know, to support that, because I don't know, just saying, me just saying it's historical because it's X amount of years old. Every house in, almost every house in Old Town Site would then therefore be historical. So I think it has to be designated by.
And there are portions of that area that were designated in 1999 by the Texas Historic Landmark as a historic building. I don't know if that is one of the components of the overall section. It may be that that portion was not part of the original or historical land site that got that designation. So I think that that's something that could be verified between now and when city council takes action. Or if you're so inclined, you can postpone this until you get definity on that item and then take action. The original motion was by Vice Chair Hendrix, and it was seconded by Commissioner Dansby.
Okay, I propose, Commissioner Hendrix, I propose that we amend the motion to-
Approve if it is not-
As long as it's not a historical-
Building, and then deny it if it turns out to be part of the historical building.
Okay, and then deny it if it turns out to be a part of the historical building classification.
I'll second that. Commissioner Dansby.
Any more discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, show by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, it carries, five to zero. All right, that comes to discussion items. City Council update?
Thank you, Chair. So last Monday, we had one conditional use permit. This was the conditional use permit for the office on Rice Rayer Road. That was the ERS Katz Office Building just behind the restaurant that y'all just heard a couple minutes ago. They did end up approving with a seven to zero vote, and they maintained the conditions with both the facade and the vegetative screening as y'all had made recommendation to. Other than that, we only had that one item, so. That's my teacher.
Commissioners' activity report. Anybody have anything to add? All right, our next P&amp;Z meeting will be on November the 6th, 2023. Does anybody know that they're not going to be here? Okay, I will not be here. So that means I'm leaving it in Commissioner Hendrix's hands. All right.
I'm done.
That brings us to adjournment at 7:16.
Coming up on Texas Parks and Wildlife.
Their declines are indicating to us that something's going on in our grassland systems that isn't healthy.
Not many people know about this park because they hear about the bigger parks.
As far as jobs go, this is pretty amazing. I mean, getting to work out here in the mountains, it's all very beautiful.
Texas Parks and Wildlife, a television series for all outdoors.
We're ready.
Okay, let's go.
Go.
We're at the Mem's Ranch in Marfa, Texas.
Let's spread out a little bit more.
Let's spread out a little bit more over here.
We're studying the wintering survival of grassland birds in the Chihuahua Desert. We've seen a decline in grassland birds across the-